Five twenty-nine? I make coal all day. I was in fact, he called how long ago?
Yes, the end of, um, I think it's just about, I seen two ladies just arrived for the first thing.
Cause I'm gonna say so much, I said, I didn't say it was not made to on the website. But I thought it was the last meeting.
I think that's what it says.
For the first, I think it was.
Yeah, I think that's what it says.
And that part you have to actually get.
And so, on the table. Oh, but when they say it's about two forty-one, the check line. It is on the, um, kind of nation, I think, able to get some. But who's buying too, living in, where is it still, so if taking on these, um, not December pain. It's really thinking of being a senior. Because two people won't let me live or deceased.
Tell them.
Five twenty-nine?
Yeah, but let's call it.
I make coal all day. I was a fucking coal, I was a little bit of coal, um, business.
Regular meeting of the mayor and city council, city of Port Allen, Louisiana, Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty P M. Each person must decide before entering the chamber which agenda item they wish to comment on. If they are not seated in the chamber when the agenda item is heard, they will be notified by an officer to enter the council chamber to address that agenda item. Agenda, please silence all electronic devices. One call to order, two pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberties and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Joseph, Chris, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Gordon?
Oh, uh, here.
Hubbell?
Here.
King?
Here.
James?
Yeah, I can say that, I remember we were voting using machine and that as well.
We have a forum.
For approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion.
Motion my councilwoman Gordon, seconded by councilwoman Joseph.
Here, Mr. Joseph.
From the public, which is, yes. Roll call please.
Mr. Joseph, you, Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubbell?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes. Post passes. Uh, public comments, comments from the public are allowed in accordance with L A revised statute forty-two eleven, section two through thirty-four, and specifically limited to an agenda item to be considered during the meeting. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. We have, uh, two people that signed in for thirteen and fourteen. Six, presentation from Louisiana Rule Water Association Sewer Rate Study and Discussion of Necessary Sewer Rate Increase to Achieve a dollar and fifteen cents substantially factor in the sewer fund as required by the Louisiana Community Development Block Grant, L C D B G, Mrs. Henry.
Hi, uh, my name's Tim LaMoyne, I'm with Louisiana Rule Water. I've been with Louisiana Rule Water for, uh, twenty-four years now. This is one of the many things that, uh, Louisiana Rule Water does at no cost to communities down all over, uh, the state, uh, whether it be water or wastewater. Uh, we provide, uh, technical assistance if, uh, or sanitary surveys, compliance issues with form of health, D E Q, uh, meterage testing, uh, leak flotation, track cameras, just anything to do with water and wastewater, and this is at no cost to you. So congratulations on getting a L C G B, uh, grant for your sewer collection. Uh, also, before we get started, a little bit of town called Mooreville, which is in Falls Parish, not far from Marshall. I was an employee here for eleven years, I was an old worker for, and bear for six. So I know, I've sat up in your positions that I intend on running, uh, uh, again next year. I know rate increases not, um, very favorable to the public now. But with the L C G B, there are two stipulations. You must be at a one point one five sustainable factor, and you must fund critical equipment. Uh, since it was collection, critical equipment is minimum, but, uh, at your current rates, you are not at a one point one five. So Louisiana Rule Water does not set rates. I'm here strictly as a calculator, that we, we put in rates for a start to get to one point one five, but it can be manipulated any way that you want, you see you want to, as long as we get to that one point one five. So if we, we can go, we can get started, and, uh, these are, we're gonna show you two actual twenty-four year-end and twenty-five year-end expenses and your budget that you adopt. So currently you're paying, uh, you pay eight, eight thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars, thirty-six, thirty-seven cents in twenty-four, eight thousand seven hundred thirty-two and twelve cents in twenty-five, and you're projected to pay eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars for a total of a hundred and four thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars to your D E Q obligation. Then you see in blue where it says twenty-year asset contingency fund. That's for the critical equipment that's, uh, uh, you, you must fund. That's only nine hundred sixteen dollars and fifty cents per month for a total of right at eleven thousand dollars. So in total obligation, you're at a hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents for your twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Here's all your current balances that you had at that time. Your current balance, uh, was as of a couple weeks ago, right here to the right. So currently you've got three million two hundred sixty thousand, uh, nine hundred fifty-six dollars. Kind of sort of available to you in event of emergency or whatever. Now here are your actual expenditures. I don't know if you wanna go line item for line item, or just... Here at the very bottom for your total operating expenses. This is for both the plant and the collection system. So actual in two thousand twenty-four year-end was eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars. When you add your loan obligation, it's nine hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred twelve thousand forty-four cents. An actual year-end twenty-five is one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred six thousand, sixteen cents, when you add the obligation of D E Q loan, you're one million, two hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-one and sixty dollars. Now, your budget for year-end twenty-six on operating expenses is one million, two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. With your D E Q loan and your new critical equipment obligation, you're at one million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred twelve thousand, ninety-four cents before you are in the, you know, before you make a profit. That is your expenses. We show depreciation, but it is not added to your expenses as your auditor does, so that really helps a whole lot. So your actual wastewater sales in twenty-four, along with all your other income, was ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. At year-end twenty-five, it was eighty-six thousand, forty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents, and budgeted for year-end twenty-six. I'm sorry, that's what Andrew said, I'm, I'm sorry. Total revenue, one million, nine hundred, well, ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy, fifty-seven dollars. One million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents for year-end twenty-five, and one million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred for year-end twenty-six. So you can see, if you stay with your budget, with your current rates, you're gonna have a deficit of ninety-six thousand, four hundred twelve dollars and ninety-four cents. So currently, you have two thousand three hundred and fifty-six total connections. Of those, you got two thousand and ninety-nine that are residential, and two hundred and fifty-seven are commercial. This is the water you actually sold. Your rates, or your bill is, is calculated by water usage. So you actually sold one million, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-two, one, one hundred fifty-one million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred gallons to everybody, that's including residential and commercial. But we separate that. If we would've separated, your total average monthly use would be five thousand, three hundred seventy-three. But once we separated your commercial sales from your residential sales, your commercials average ten thousand, nine hundred nine gallons per connection. Your residential averaged four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five gallons per connection, which the average is anywhere from national average from four to five hundred to fifty-five hundred. So you're right in line with, with what the national average is. If you were, let's say your average was three thousand gallons, then I'd say probably your water meters needed to be changed, they're getting old, uh, inaccurate, and I'll, but, but since you're right on in, in that four to five hundred, fifty to five hundred, uh, your meters are pretty accurate. So current, your rate for wastewater is twenty dollars and forty cents for the first two thousand gallons and three dollars and fifty-five cents thereafter. So your average waste, uh, sewer bill for, for, almost forty-seven hundred gallons is twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And that's an average bill, 'cause you're gonna have your, um, low income, uh, your, your widow, uh, you know, one or two to the, uh, household is gonna use two thousand or less, but then you got a family of five and six that's gonna use maybe seven to eight thousand. So the program works on an average. So here's where we have to come in and decide what you wanna do to get to that one point one-five. At these rates, you can see that once you pay all your obligations, all your expenses budgeted, you will come out with, uh, with a surplus of one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and six cents, and that puts you at that one point one-five sustainable factor. But I just plugged in these, Adrian and I went back and forth on, on a couple of them. So we changed it from twenty dollars and forty cents to thirty dollars, and from three fifty-five to four dollars. So that makes the average bill forty dollars and seventy-eight cents for a ten dollars and eighty-one increase, ten dollars and eighty-one cent increase. The ten dollars eighty-one eight cent increase is gonna probably have to be the increase per connection, but we can do it in different ways to get that. We can go down on the monthly minimum from two thousand to fifteen hundred. We can go down on the thirty dollars, but then we have to go up on the per thousand to generate that revenue. And then on the commercial side, just put in fifty dollars for the first two thousand and four dollars a thousand thereafter. You see, once we separated the two hundred fifty-seven, uh, commercial uses, this is what you sold them in water to base your sewer charge on. You sold them thirty-three million six hundred forty-four thousand three hundred. They averaged ten thousand nine hundred nine gallons. So at this rate, that's what their bill would be.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Um, you say you charging the commercial four dollars a gallon same as the resident?
But the base is fifty.
I didn't even, what did you say?
The base went up to fifty.
Right.
No, I just put that in there. I can change that to whatever y'all want. Uh, typically, your commercials pay more than your residential because they take that water and wastewater and usually make a profit off of it. But you have impact fees also to that also, so just that in mind.
So each commercial customer right now is charged a, uh, impact fee as well as their regular store.
As well as their rate, and it's small.
And it's just fair. You fall on, yeah, twenty-five, thirty-five, seventy-five, fifty, and seventy-five.
Twenty-five, thirty-five, fifty.
So just for memory.
What?
I'm gonna say another thing. Currently, the sewer rate for commercial outside of the impact fee is the same as the residential.
Right.
We are here separating, we're gonna have a, one way right now, whether the initial proposal or the ordinance proposal coming up next will have a separate fee for residential and a separate fee for commercial that will be more than the residential in addition to the impact fees.
And the, the impact fees were not changed in this study. Just the rate. So if you, if you wanna change anything, like I said, Rule One does not set the rates. We're just here to see what we need to do to get to a one point one-five in order for you to get this money, 'cause if those demands are not met, you will not get the grant.
So, um, I think when you came, what, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we kinda played with the numbers back and forth, and I wasn't for the, so I just want y'all to, to know, I wasn't for the thirty dollars for, uh, the residential customers. Um, I think it was like twenty-four dollars and some change, um, with the minimum being fifteen hundred versus two thousand is kinda what gave us about the same amount. So it's up to y'all, you know, it's brought to the board for the decision, but, um, being I've come from doing the utility bills before, you know, we have a hard enough time now trying to collect a utility bill and water and from, from our customers, you know, we have a...
You want me to plug in the other area?
Yeah, just so they can see.
So this one, you have to pay it in for this connecting note?
I don't know that, but they can't say, you know, thirty versus twenty-four. I mean, it's a couple of dollars, but it makes a difference, you know?
To some of them, too.
Yeah.
And the last time we increased sewer rates was just before we were in the conversation now.
Right.
The council took it out of the action in November, December, and the way our utility billing works, it's gonna take even whatever we introduce at night to adopt next month. Since it is an ordinance, the first time that the customers receive on their utility bills will be at the March first bill, which is the bills due March twenty-sixth.
So we changed the two thousand to fifteen hundred, and instead of thirty, we went to twenty-four. So there you're only going, you're going up three dollars and sixty cents on the base rate, but you're dropping it five per gallon. And then we went from four to four sixty. So that makes the average bill go from twenty-nine ninety-seven to thirty-eight seventy. That's an increase of eight dollars and seventy-three cents on the residential. Then we dropped also to fifteen hundred on your commercial and went up to five fifty on them. That makes the average bill for your commercials a hundred and one dollars and seventy-five cents. And that rate puts you at the one point one-five also. But I can change this to...
But we still would be able to be, get the grant with this figure here?
Yes, with, with both of them. Either one you wanna go with, yes.
Or something in between those.
Yeah, it's, as long as it...
That's why we have Mr. LaMourning there with his software that he can plug in numbers into that spreadsheet to get to that one point one-five sustainability.
We can leave the base rate at twenty-four, but then the per thousand's gonna have to go up considerably, much higher. To get to that one point one-five. However you wanna manipulate the rates.
Any suggestions?
Well...
And whatever is decided on, at your next meeting, when you adopt it by ordinance, I have to have a copy of that ordinance and submit that with this rate study and a summary letter to L C D B G, you know, for you receiving the funding.
Can you pull it down so I can see the resident, um, accounts?
Like this?
Keep going.
That's it.
Okay.
See, right now currently, it's, at your current rate is twenty-nine ninety-seven, and that dropping it from two thousand fifteen hundred and going up from twenty-four to twenty-four and three fifty-five to four sixty, then your average bill will go up to thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents. And that will generate nine hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars just on your residents in a year's time.
Which is still about a ten dollar increase.
It's, I think we went up a little bit more on the commercial, so it's, it's, uh, eight, it's eight dollars seventy-five cent for a forty-seven hundred dollar water bill.
Well, I think the commercial means should be paying more than resident, uh, 'cause it's a business.
Well, we, we did go from four sixty to five fifty on the per thousand, and to fifty dollars from twenty, twenty-four to fifty dollars.
And keep in mind, the, the impact fees are put also on the commercial accounts. So they have commercial impact fees that's, that's on...
On this scenario, the commercials are paying a little more, so that's why it's not a ten dollar increase, and it's like an eight dollars and seventy-five cent increase.
While I consider it negligible or not meaningful, commercial accounts are also charged sales tax. They're also paying sales tax on whatever they order.
Okay.
Just keep that in mind today, that there are other fees that are paying that residential customers do not pay.
Okay.
Okay, go back to the person.
So, Adrian?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one would you, would feel that is good and comfortable for the, the resident and the commercial citizen?
Certainly not what was initially proposed for the, uh, we would go from a minimum bill, minimum that we charge on the sewer line item for residential customers. That was gonna go from twenty dollars and forty cents to the initial proposal of, let me make sure I get this right.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars. So it would increase nine dollars and sixty cents per month. That's all your seniors or, uh, low income, whatever, that, and also we have quite a few people that keep their services online. When tenants move in or out, the landlords keep it on, there's no consumption whatsoever on that meter, and they're not just, it's other people that, when they go on vacation and they don't use any water that month or whatever, they still get a minimum charge even there's zero usage. So that would be gone from, I mean, the initial proposal of what Louisiana Rule Water started off with of twenty dollars and forty cents to thirty, nine dollars and sixty cents per month increase. The art, the draft ordinance has that minimum line item going up to twenty-four dollars. So they would only see a three dollars and sixty cents per month increase for all those that use no water or those that can manage to keep their water consumption, a hundred and fifteen hundred dollars per month. Uh, Mayor and I thought that was better than those people getting the ten dollar increase. Now, to make up for that difference on there, you got increased, so the commercials went up on the per usage from four to five fifty.
And we kept it at fifty on the base.
They kept the base rate fifty. So commercial will still be seeing on either plan a base increase of at least twenty dollars, but there, to my knowledge, there are a few commercials that are zero consumption. Those are zero consumption, it would be the residential's or seniors that through their fidelity managed to use only six hundred dollars of water per month, whatever, whatever. Yeah. So that's why our proposal is that draft ordinance, but again, we have this around here that we could possibly, y'all wanna increase that for the, those people a little bit more, increase that fifteen hundred, I don't know, eighteen hundred, if you wanna change the...
I could put in anything.
Our software that whatever to do can put in. The only thing is, we will have to create a separate sewer commercial fee, 'cause right now they're all residential, but that is a programming issue that we could easily solve on the encoding, plus having to be affected on the March first bill. We have a couple of months to get that into our software.
Adrian, what is the regulation that the council members have in their package? What's on their ordinance?
The city hall proposal was the second document I gave them, which he showed, uh, twenty-four dollars for the base rate for residential, so going from twenty dollars and forty cents to twenty-four dollars for the first fifteen hundred dollars of water as opposed to two thousand gallons of water. And then for each one thousand gallons of water thereafter, four dollars and sixty cents, which is currently three dollars and fifty-five cents. So we're increasing that to a dollar five over the minimum. And commercial is going from twenty dollars and forty cents to fifty dollars per fifteen hundred dollars of water, which each one being, which each one thousand over that, five dollars and fifty cents. So commercials are going to see a huge increase, draws what proposal you go with. They don't, used to get paid exactly the same rate as the residential in addition to their impact fees. We're not changing the impact fees. We're gonna have them.
Just to see your impact fees, this hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred, that's it, that's where the impact fees are included in.
Right. So, and Mr. LaMourning, I think, was in my office Tuesday of last week, Wednesday of last week. He came in with this twenty dollars and forty cents to thirty, and I go, no, the mayor's not gonna like that. And we try to work on getting that number down for those that use zero consumption, are elderly or fixed income. So we just put playing numbers in, and so we just put twenty-two, twenty-three, couldn't get to that one point one-five sustainability. This is how we got to one point one-five sustainability. Again, that's why we have Mr. LaMourning here. If y'all wanna throw some other numbers down, but based upon thirty or forty, yes, he was in my office, playing with numbers, that city hall proposal, twenty-four dollars base rate, four sixty per one thousand over it at fifteen hundred, and then fifty dollars and five fifty per additional is what we propose in the draft ordinance.
And with the one point one-five, one point oh means you're breaking. One point one-five means you're making fifteen cents over your expenses. So when you think about it, when you go to a convenience store or any, their markup is, would be a one point three. They mark everything up pretty much thirty percent. So you're half of what, let's just say, a convenience store or whatever it is.
Louisiana Community Development Block Grant, as well as more and more federal aid, he's also mentioned, we don't have it applied for this, we have the water sector.
Water sector. Same stipulation with water sector.
That got the federal government, wherever we're getting aid from, they're tired of giving out aid without the systems trying to upkeep their infrastructure.
They were tired of...
Fifteen percent, that, that one point one-five, that extra fifteen, two hundred dollars is supposed to be to help upkeep and plan for. Uh, we used some of the ARPA money to install generators in all of our lift stations to keep those pumps running. Those generators don't have an indefinite lifespan. They have ten, fifteen years. So as we're going along, you're supposed to be putting some of your money each year into like a savings account, which is that one point one-five, so that when that generator needs to be replaced, we have the money to replace it or any other infrastructure.
Just, uh, uh, the lift station's life expectancy is thirty years. Uh, a well, life expectancy is forty years. I did a rate study for a water system. It wasn't water sector or L C D B, they just needed a rate increase. They had a well that was a little over forty years old, and we have a program that works that, you know, what it costs to build, you know, to drill a well. And I told them, I said, you seriously need to think about funding for another well. Two weeks after I did the rate study, the operator called me, said, you must adjacence. I said, what do you mean? He said, our well, and I, fortunately I had more than one well, but the, the life expectancy of a well is forty, the life expectancy of P V C in the ground is thirty years before it starts giving you trouble and deteriorating. So there is an expiration on every single piece of infrastructure you got out there.
So is everyone good with the twenty-four dollars?
Yeah, the next meeting, after you put it here.
We don't have to have an introduction.
This is it.
Seven, well, we're at hundred ninety-six, hundred ninety-seven.
Yes, right.
So seven?
Yeah, if you have no further questions from the...
Everyone's good? Y'all good with the twenty-four? Adrian, how you feeling? I know what you just said, but...
I don't like writing prices, this doesn't... I don't like writing praises, this doesn't affect me, cause I'm not in the city of Port Island, I am in West Baton Rouge Parish. I don't know if y'all are aware of the West Baton Rouge Parish, you're facing the same issues.
Same.
And based upon what I heard West Baton Rouge Parish say, that they have to go up on for their infrastructure. This, I think, is better than what they're looking at on there, so.
We just wanna get your input on it, cause you, you know, the number, okay.
You know, nobody likes an increase. There's nobody that likes that. But as Ten said, uh, you need to have a little savings, and that's what we seem to forget about.
Well, and then your expenses increase also.
Sure.
So as your increases, uh, expenses increase, your profit decreases.
Ten, when I'm looking at this, we're, we're talking about around about, figure about two hundred thousand?
Of profit?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's assuming no emergencies happen or whatever, we do our sewer, well, we're trying to get sewer infrastructure is not that great.
Well, sewer is, it's, it's never a money-making, uh, utility. There's nothing good that goes in sewer. Uh, we all know where it goes there, it's corrosive, it eats up everything, uh, it's expensive to treat.
Seven. Introduction of an ordinance to amend Appendix Section twenty-five of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances relative to sewer user impact fees.
The ordinance is to decrease from two thousand to fifteen hundred gallons for the minimum and also create two different tiers, one for our residential customers, one for our commercial customers, that will be due. Residential customers rate for the first fifteen hundred is twenty-four dollars per, for the first fifteen hundred and then four sixty for each one thousand thereafter. For our commercial and industrial customers, their first fifteen hundred would be fifty dollars in each, in each one thousand thereafter, five dollars and fifty cents. Everything else in that code will stay the same, including the impact fees. This would have an effective date with, the ordinance would be effective January first, but customers would not see this on their utility bills until the March first billing, that would be due March twenty-sixth.
Any other motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hubble, second by Councilwoman Gordon. Roll call please, anyone from the public which should be heard. Roll call please.
Joseph, yes, Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
All right, thank y'all. Once the ordinance is adopted, I'll give you a copy of it.
Yes, sir.
We'll go from there.
Thank you.
Eight, authorized to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement up to thirty-five hundred with the Port Island Volunteer Fire Department to provide for a commemorative statue at Centennial Park. Uh, I brought this to committee last week, uh, we have Mr. Brewer and some of the firefighters here tonight.
Good evening, everyone, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I apologize for not being to committee meeting last week, I had a trip planned four months ago and, uh, it's my birthday, so I couldn't tell my wife, we can't go, so, uh, and I appreciate, uh, Matt Clonteen and Councilman Hubble kind of carrying the ball for me last week. Uh, if you, those of you who don't know me, uh, my name's Barry Brewer. I was the Chief of Municipal Officer for City of Port Island from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and twelve. My public service started two years before then, uh, in nineteen seventy-six, in June of seventy-six. My dad, uh, I was twenty-two years old, my dad said, what are you doing Monday night? I said, I don't have anything planned, he said, good, come with me, he says, uh, I have a fireball meeting, I want you to think about joining, it's time for you to get back to the community. My dad had been a member since nineteen fifty-eight, uh, about a year after we moved into Port Island from, from Lobdell. So my first few, uh, years were spent as a Lobdalian, as I call it, so. But anyhow, uh, I have been a member since nineteen seventy-six, so you're looking at almost forty-nine and a half years. Chief Diddy, I bought to Chief here, uh, he, seventy-five? He joined at seventy-five, so he, he, he trumps me, uh, Mark, Mark's still a volunteer. He was a volunteer, came of career personnel, retired and he's still a volunteer again, so Mark's got a lot of service. Our organization has, uh, suffered as many civic organizations have over the years with a lack of participation from, uh, succeeding generations. These days, people are more involved in, in things with their kids, uh, and their jobs and, uh, for some reason, they, they, they're not interested in, in, in doing stuff like this anymore. So, that being said, uh, we were chartered, or actually created by city ordinance of, uh, March fifth, nineteen thirty-five, ordinance number three, nineteen thirty-five, and the City's Code of Ordinances book is chapter thirty, thirty-eight, Article three, Section thirty-eight dash one oh one. That's when we were officially created, uh, from what I understand. And, and as a matter of fact, the reason we were created, I think you have in your packet an article, uh, State Times article from January fourth of nineteen eighteen, top right corner is blown up on the succeeding pages. Port Island business area qualified, there was no fire department, uh, burned down two old blocks. School, church, uh, drug stores, market tail stores, uh, the Centennial Mall from Exxon, which was SO standard all at the time, across the river to help put it out. Battery sent whatever they had at that time on a ferry, took the ferry when the ferry was still operating back in. Bought the fire, their fire apparatus to help put it out. We have just suffered, as I said, from lack of participation. In nineteen, in two thousand and eighteen, we sent out three thousand letters. Uh, Mr. Anthony Sonzi, it was our president at the time, uh, it was his idea, which I thought was a great idea. Uh, we got a mailing list, we sent out to every household in our district, uh, and we got maybe, what, half a dozen letters back, Anthony? Something like that, uh, and they were really from, don't know if it's anybody, little old ladies, they said they'd be happy to bake us some cookies. And so, we kinda knew at that time, uh, things, the handwriting's on the wall. Right now, we're down to seven members that are active, uh, and most of us, I just said seventy-two last week. Uh, Mr. Diddy's the same age as I am. We're not into what we call the suppression anymore, where we put on the gear and go in the house and crawl on our knees, cause our knees are bad and our backs are bad. So, uh, you know, we, we help on the support end of it now, you know, can we get a two-lofted truck for the guys? Can we direct traffic or whatever? But we, we have one gentleman who's in his twenties, uh, but volunteerism is, was volunteer fire department in the, in the parish is, is, is way down. Uh, there's probably less than twenty across the whole parish now, or before you probably had at least a hundred. But anyhow, so we decided, look, it's, it's probably time to, to look at any gain for us as far as an organization, a big organization, and we had some funds that were left over from fundraisers we did over the years. We've never been paid, and we'll say that from the beginning, we never got a salary, never got paid for a call. You know, we used our own time, our own gas, time away from families, uh, and, and we've done it for nothing. Uh, we stayed, the taxpayers of the town, I'll say this, uh, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think, over the years in insurance premium cost because of volunteers supplementing the career development. Career development didn't start in nineteen fifty-four, so we were around nineteen years before the, the paid department got started. And we've been a combination department ever since. So with, with that said, our funds that we have left, we said, look, let's see if the city be willing to let us pay for a monument uh, that would, would honor the past men and women who've done this, uh, job before we, we go out, so to speak. And, uh, so, we got a price, uh, had a company I was dealing with, they were on our new owners. When we, when I asked for specific specifications, ended up being an aluminum, uh, type of a sculpture thing. We knew we couldn't afford brass, I looked at brass, for brass firefighter monument, it started at fifty-two thousand dollars on the internet, so. So, well, we don't have that much money. So, when it got down to being the type of aluminum with painted letters and everything, we said, no, we can't do this. So, I went to the small ground on Court Street, Grand Memorial, and got with him, and he said, yeah, I think we can do something, so. Got a concept, I think y'all may have seen it last week, uh, in your packet, there should be also a, uh, a quote from him, I, I double-checked with him this morning, uh, he, he quoted us twenty-three thousand dollars. We have, I get it wrong. It's like twenty thousand, six hundred and one dollars in our coffers, which is what we wanna, uh, we wanna expand. We're gonna spend everything that we have.
Repeat that amount again? Twenty thousand?
It's twenty thousand, six hundred and one dollars and like eighty-something cents. I thought I had it here. But we were asking for just the funds to supplement, and he's, he's quoting us a, a quote delivered of twenty-three thousand dollars to, uh, put this on the site, so basically, we're asking, number one, for permission to put this, uh, memorial. Number two, for, uh, supplemental funds from the city, uh, and also, he, as a quote, we taxed, and we've never, we, we don't have a tax-free certificate, uh, when we would do things in the past, we would work and use the city's.
Right.
And if you, we can be glad to either give, y'all, give him the way of down payment, whatever funds, whatever they do, to give the city the money, or if y'all wanna work it through us, uh, I'll ask him if he can make it to the City of Port Island Care, or I'm on the fire department or whatever. We've never had a problem using the, the tax, the city's tax, uh, free certificate in the past, and I just, I don't wanna, uh, come here and say, we need you to pay for sales tax too, so it's gonna save us, what, two thousand, ten, ten percent, two thousand dollars, whatever, twenty-three hundred, so. Uh, so, so that's what we're asking for, is just to supplement what we have, we're gonna get to what's left in our bank account, our funds. I take, got our funds over the years, we had Chicken Barque, Denister Race Funds, uh, you know, we, before the thirteenth day, we had the original, our, our, we had the original spookhouse, uh, before Halloween, two nights we would do at the Fat Grounds Inn, uh, we spent three nights putting things together, we charged a dollar a head. You could come through as many times as you wanted for a dollar each time, it wasn't a whole lot of money we raised, but it was a community event we put on. But these funds that we raised, uh, we, with these funds we raised, with the station out on Court Street, when that was built, we paid for all the tables and chairs and, and the, and the training room, and we also paid for that big, huge commercial stove that's in that, uh, out of our funds. Back when we had the seventy-fifth anniversary of the city, uh, we asked and got the Salt Creek concessions. With that, we bought two portable radios that the city at that time could not afford, because it's supposedly not allowed for the radios that we need. So the volunteers bought their radios out of our funds that, that we made from, from this fundraiser for the seventy-fifth anniversary, so. Uh, you know, we, we've helped out the city in numerous ways, we're just asking for a little help on the back end here. Uh, now, we're not going away per se, we are as a Port Island organization, but will still be a few of us be volunteers to help out around town. Uh, I understand that it might be a move to create a West Baton Rouge consolidated volunteer employment uh, with what's, with, you know, people that will have it, and, uh, so that, that might happen, but these are our funds that we created, we serve the community, these funds mostly came from the community, and that's what we're gonna put it back in, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, if you have any questions on the.
I just have some to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we do thank you all for your service, volunteering, um, that's an A plus.
Thank you.
But however, um, I understand that y'all need us to pay us the difference. Um, beginning of the year, the council member and I, um, we did vote on two thousand dollars across the board to any organization that come before us for a donation. So, with that said, um, that's what we voted on, was two thousand dollars to give.
Yes, ma'am.
Now.
And I understand that you, you've given two thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars a year to several organizations.
No, no, sir, that was before we made this vote, the end, the beginning of last year.
Yes.
Yes, that's the past, but this is the future right now, we're talking about the present. We did voted on two thousand dollars for every organization that came before us. Now, I know what we voted for, they know what they voted for, so it's up to them if they wanna change it, but I want them to know we changed this ordinance, you better be ready for the risk of coming in here and asking for the same thing. Just like he just said, we did for the others, they gonna say the same thing too. Now, mind you, we did vote for this last year.
Ms. Doran, answer your question.
Yes, sir.
Were these organizations affiliated with the city, were they, were they organized under city ordinances?
I don't think, no, they all was part of the organization.
Okay, well.
But you still follow that category.
If you check your current Code of Ordinances book, you'll see that we were organized by the City of Port Island.
Correct, and we don't mind, we don't mind helping.
I consider, I consider us, in a way, we are a part of the city, part of city government.
But they are a part of the city too, I mean, you know, they are residents, but still, and all. I know what we agreed on, I'm not saying that we don't wanna help y'all, but we, you know, just like you came and said what we did in the past. The next group will come and say, well, y'all just gave him this, isn't it?
Well, you, you had us, you had us.
And I can still say that, I mean, we can give you two thousand, but it's up to them if they wanna increase it. We, they can vote on it, I'm just saying what we had voted for and what we had decided on giving everybody. So, that is saying like, we're not sticking to our rules and what we voted for, and we overstep ourselves, saying, hey, well, we have, they volunteered, we're gonna give them three thousand. So then the next group will come and say, well, y'all gave him three thousand. So, our vote doesn't mean anything.
I'm gonna refer you back to, uh, City Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-eight, Section thirty-eight dash one oh one. Uh, and I think, I'm not an attorney, but I think technically, we are in all of the city government, because it was formed back in nineteen thirty-five.
I don't think it make a difference.
I don't, I don't think it different, but we should have our opinion, that's, that's why I'm thinking so.
I understand what we voted on, I voted yes, and, uh, I will say this. Those organizations that we gave money to do not run into a burning building. They do not risk their lives, that, that's not what they do. These people did. It's a totally different arena.
Well, you need to change it.
That's a totally different arena, if there's an exception, it needs to be an exception. But, the thing about it is we have a group of volunteers, and there's an old saying, there's no stronger heart than a volunteer. We need to recognize that, we need to recognize this group for as long as they did it. They wanna keep it in Port Island, they don't wanna go parish-wide, that was a discussion he and I had. That was their decision, which I think is good, because it is Port Island. But remember, these other groups that we have given money to do not put their lives on the line. These did.
I understand that.
So I have a question, is the twenty-three with the tax?
Twenty-three is excluding tax.
Excluding, okay, it does say excluding tax, okay. Um, because I think, uh, we did vote on the two thousand dollar, um, limits. Um, however, I brought this up at committee meeting, and that was not brought up, I guess I could have, uh, given that information to you before tonight. So I, cause I, I didn't know if it was three thousand, thirty-two hundred, or, so that's why I put it at thirty-five hundred, just to give a little wiggle room. So doing the math, it'll be twenty-three ninety-eight twenty, that'll be, that you're asking actually the city to come out of pocket for.
Yeah, that's an install price.
So that'll be exactly what, sir?
I'm sorry, that's an install price too, I haven't done delivery.
So how much do you?
So, um, he, well, they're asking for the twenty-three ninety-eight twenty for the city to, um, sponsor along with our tax exempt form, so taxes won't be a part of the price. along with our tax exempt form, so taxes won't be a part of the price.
I mean, I agree with what Gator said, but also, when someone else comes and asks for that twenty-five hundred, two dollars, I don't know.
We've, we've, you can ask me, Mr. Payne, we've, we've never asked the city for a dime. We don't come every year asking for two thousand dollars for anything, we never, we've never have, we've never asked. This is a one-time request, when I come to back year after year for, for an event, and asking money to pay for all supplement, we're asking for a one-time supplement, and that's it, you won't hear from us again, believe me.
So, Casey, how does that work with the Code of Ordinances? I guess we need to find that out, the Code of Ordinances, you were saying that they're, they are under? Does that play a part in anything?
No, I don't believe it does, I'll have to look into it to confirm. I think that, at this point, it's a matter of, if you wanna give, if they answered yes. If you're sticking to up to the two thousand, you know, dollars that you was reading upon at the beginning of the year, is it gonna be the full two thousand, is it gonna be somewhere less than that? I don't think their, their status as an arm of the city is what it's at. Because for it that is correct, was any money, my question, was any money budgeted in the budget for the department?
No.
Right, so.
I'm just asking.
And I can look into it more after today, but if no money was budgeted for it.
So, they have the twenty thousand, six hundred and one eighty, that's how much they have currently in their account. So, they're asking for twenty-three ninety-eight twenty, two thousand, three hundred, ninety-eight dollars and twenty-two.
Two thousand, three.
Ninety-eight and twenty cents.
Okay, with the taxes and, how much would they?
So, this is the amount, yes, we just wouldn't pay the taxes going, yeah.
Ninety-eight dollars.
Yeah.
If you look into the two thousand.
So, they just need three hundred dollars.
Sure.
Oh, no, well, that hasn't been, we, this is discussion up until this point, there's been no motion.
No.
So, you'd just be short three hundred dollars.
Right, four hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars.
Right.
Want to make a motion?
Remember when you.
What we're making a motion on, for the two thousand or the full amount?
Well, the motion, I guess, would be if you want to do the two thousand, or if you want to give the full amount.
So, the first motion would be for the two thousand?
It's whatever, whatever, as a councilmaker, someone needs to make a motion, but the motion that you made needs to specify. Say it again?
I make the motion for the two thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it. Because I think it's a great idea, but we're gonna get so much heat from that, going over that twenty-five hundred dollars.
Remember that, when you, when we're comparing groups that have come up and asking, asking about, no, it's not the same.
Yes, it is.
The, he, they're, they're gonna have twenty thousand, six hundred and one of this whole amount. Now, when these other organizations come up here, do they have that kind of percentage? I doubt it.
I don't know what they have, but we just know what they ask.
No, that's the problem, we never know what they have, or what they've raised, but.
But you can pay the difference.
Listen, I prepared to pay the difference.
Let's pay it.
Okay, if everybody in here does not support.
It's not that they're not supporting, okay.
If you do not support the people that put their lives on the line.
Damn right.
So, the motion was made by Councilwoman Gordon.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait. That don't mean that we're not, we're not gonna support the vol, the volunteer.
That has nothing to do with it, we're asking for funds, we're not asking for support, 'cause we don't have support anymore.
That's, 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 that's neither here nor there, that's not right, that's not to say that we're not compassionate, or we're not supportive, or one of the other, that's not right, don't put that on our face. We just living out for what's gonna come before us. That is not fair to do that to us, because we set
Exactly.
a certain amount of money that we were gonna give out to the community. And if we go beyond, just like we, it's not fair to us. And to put that burden on us to say, if we don't do this, we are not right, that is not fair to us. I understand the passion that you have, and I understand about the firefighters. And, mister, it's no disrespect, mister, but it's not. But you got to understand the situation where we're in, because we will get the heat from other organizations. Where you give, you did this, y'all did that, we will, you don't understand our position.
And I worked for the city for thirty-four years, I understand. I understand to a point, but.
It's not, it's no disrespect.
I have a good friend, Mark is my good friend, I, you know, it's, nothing against y'all, we just, this is the rule that we set, and we have to stick to our rules.
That's fine, could, could, would you guys be willing to come up with the other four hundred dollars, three hundred dollars between y'all?
Well, so he, he'll take care.
I'm asking, I'm asking.
I don't mind, I don't mind contributing, I don't.
Okay, split it even, that'd be great.
No, 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 I'm not agreeing on that.
I'm not agreeing with y'all.
You're agreeing?
Okay, we've been on it long enough.
So, you appreciate what we did, but you.
Yes, we appreciate.
You'll help us out with the after money, okay.
So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon, and second by Councilman Payne.
Are there, is there any additional comment?
I hope you all have some big trigger donation, that's the last one, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble?
No.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, there. Can you have Mark send whatever over?
Yeah, I, I told him today when I, when I did with him the more.
Okay, and you can just call him.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Number nine, consider approving the process for an employee's rate of pay, Mr. Dale.
This is one of the audit findings that, even though this is what we do, we did have it in writing, so now we've put it in writing. Everything in red, that was on your document, is what we're adding to the policy, we're not changing anything that we currently doing. When we hired your employee, it's in the police department. Mr. Mitchell sends, Chief Mitchell sends the written notice to the payroll clerk of what step and grade to pay the employee. Any other employee in the city, the mayor does that, or they get a raise, the police department, Chief Mitchell sends that correspondence to the payroll clerk, mayor does it for anybody else. When we adopt the budget, every year, if there's a cross-the-board increase, that budget will serve as the authorization to the payroll clerk to pay the employees the new rates, so. Sorry. So, this is what this document does, is to put what we're currently doing in writing. I change anything we've done so that it satisfies the audit requirement of the state agreed upon procedures that we didn't have this in our written policies and procedures.
Hi, motion?
Motion.
Second.
That was motion by Councilwoman King, second by Councilwoman Gordon. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Ten, presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, CPO, expenditures of federal awards, Mr. Dale.
One of the documents we have to present annually in preparation for the audit is this schedule of financial awards. We still have to carry ARPA on it, since that grant has not been closed out yet, even though we have expended all of the money, that's why it's on there. But the other one is the low-income housing, its official name is the Section Eight Housing Choice voucher. Federal law states that our, whatever the audit law states, that if we have expenditures over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is to be the first time for Section Eight, that we have gone over that threshold, we have to do what's called a single audit in addition to the regular audit. So, we'll be in uncharted territories that the city of Port Island has never done before, because we're gonna have over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenditures we get the previous year. With the Louisiana Community Development Block grant, that was also a federal award, so we're looking at another single audit for next year, even though they've raised the threshold, starting with next year's audit from seven hundred and fifty thousand to one million. When we combine the Section Eight, the Louisiana Community Development Block grant, we also have a two hundred thousand dollar federal grant that was recently awarded to do some repair work on the gas lines. And we, add all this, we're also gonna have another single audit for next year. And I did this document now to explain the next agenda item that's necessated because of this document of our expenditures of federal awards, as the mayor was saying. There is no need for a council approval on this, it's just a presentation of this document, so that we can have the next agenda item.
Eleven, authorize the mayor to sign the updated twenty twenty-four, twenty-five audit engagement letter from Erickson Crenshaw to include a single audit over federal expenditures instead of the alternative compliance examination engagement letter authorized in June twenty twenty-five.
In June, when we presented the authorizations for Erickson Crenshaw to do our audit, we did a state, state agreed upon procedures, the main audit, and the alternative compliance examination for our federal funds, because they expected it, just in previous years, to be underneath that seven hundred and fifty thousand. Now that they, we've discovered that we're gonna be over the seven hundred and fifty, they need to replace that main audit with another engagement letter, which is the one that was in your packet. It will cost more than the previous engagement, but they, Erickson Crenshaw, right now, has agreed to not cost more, because they've transferred the cost of that alternative compliance to the main audit. So, that, as of right now, they don't anticipate us paying anymore, but because the scope of that main audit has changed because of the same audit, they do need another signed engagement authorization. And because it's an agreement by Lawrence Act, the council has to approve it before the mayor can sign. So, we're asking if you approve, the auditors are set to begin their field work tomorrow, showing up tomorrow. So, hopefully, we can get another audit finding completed.
Is there any motion? March?
I.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hubble, second by Councilwoman Joseph. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, consider authorizing Chief Mitchell to surplus police department vehicle, two thousand fifteen Chevy Tahoe, VIN number is stated, Chief Mitchell?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor, everybody in the audience. So, just like she explained, this no different than a vehicle before, under other eight. This vehicle once sat at the back lot of our police department from two thousand and twenty-three, all the way to the beginning of this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, should have been at the beginning of this year. I remember getting with Mike to get it fixed. Once he fixed it, maybe two to three weeks afterwards, we had to park it in the back lot. Reason being, it had some, 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 some more problems. We got it to LNS, once we took to LNS, they had told us that to fix that particular vehicle, it was forty-seven hundred, ninety-four dollars, thirty, uh, thirty-five cents. Like I explained, with the previous surplus of vehicles, that's, that's steep for a two thousand and fifteen vehicle. With that being said, I would include this vehicle along with the other ones that would be recent surplus, that we have, um, we have to sell it.
Motion?
I like the motion.
How's that? They have a question, Chief, is this the vehicle that Mike messed up, that went to LNS?
Yes, ma'am. I hear before that, this same vehicle, we did have problems with. It's no different than other vehicles, we counseling for a lot of funds, funds in these vehicles, and I feel, and I would, due to the, the previous situations that with our past vehicles, every time we fixed them, within our offices driving them twelve hours, along with formal details and stuff, so the engine hours, that stuff accumulate, and it would wear them down, so even the mod, the modestment says, it's less than what it really is due to this in the city now. So, all time and time again, we find ourselves fixing these vehicles within two to three months' time, and it's disrepair. So, I'd like to move for proceed quo with the surplus, and then start focusing on the next week, when that time come.
Yeah, I just wanted them to be aware, because.
No, no, that's fine, I appreciate that.
Motion? Okay, roll call. You had a motion, but I didn't get your name for the motion.
Uh, Councilwoman Gordon?
Gordon, Gordon.
Second, let's go back, Councilwoman Joseph.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thirteen, public hearings obtained views on adopting an ordinance to amend section two point five of Article Two of Appendix B of the Port Island Code of Ordinances, and section three point one of Article Three of Appendix B of the Port Island Code of Ordinances, relative to authorized use of property in downtown mixed-use district. I have one.
Well, I'm gonna speak first.
Okay.
Do you have the, the plaque, um, the plaque that I need to give you all another plaque?
Do you have an extra?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, council members, this ordinance was introduced at last month's meeting. The proposed amendment that's before you would allow property owners who have property that be in need where it has two or more detached, single detached family dwellings to submit requests to the city for subdivision of those properties. Currently, the zoning ordinance as it stands is written out, it does not allow for property owners with those types of properties to subdivide their property.
I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm asking for an exception. The properties are, as you can see on the plaque, they're located on Nance Jefferson, and I've got Juwan here, he's leasing one of the properties at four 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 Maryland Avenue. He's gonna come up and talk now, I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
How y'all doing?
How are we?
Okay, um, yeah, I've been leasing this property for like, what, two years?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're kind of an older place, really likely, less grass, more seating, and then got a garage, kind of, you know. I don't really get that. But, yeah, so, she been telling me she didn't move back before, I really like this place. I don't wanna move, but, you know, so I've been kind of stubborn about it, you know, getting on with it, like, well, maybe let me just come here and see what it is, 'cause I don't give it up. I know y'all have y'all rules, regulations and everything, but we just, you know, just trying to see what y'all can do with this. I don't know if y'all have been up there, but it's like a little older place. You know, a house sit on top of garage, it's kind of something you usually see, and I don't know where to do a lot of remodeling, and it's kind of old. Even have like one of them little phones on the wall. Yeah, so I'm really trying to give it up, you know, so we just trying to see what we can do with it now.
You're, you're interested in buying a new piece of furniture, okay. I'm gonna tell you, we need more homeowners than renters.
Yeah.
Because homeowners have skin in the yard.
Yeah, I'm interested in buying, I'm not, you know, I just moved back here about seven years ago, raised my kids in Texas, so once I moved to Port Island, you know, it's kind of laid-back country, quiet, you know, so I kind of liked it. So, I decided to.
Let's get right here.
I just wanted to come here and try to help this area out, 'cause, you know, I, I like the little lakes, and I ain't ready to hand it back over soon.
I appreciate you.
All right, I appreciate that.
I want to sit down roots, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So, we had that all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Jeffrey, you say, Ms. Landry, that's what, that's it? So, you can't sell that house without, though, somebody?
It, it has two houses on it, and I tried to sell it, and nobody really bid on it, because it has two houses on it.
So, when, if you sell him that first part of the house, how much land would he have from the other, the garage property? There won't be any land for the other garage house, right?
Yeah, I mean, the.
For what I, for what I saw, um.
It's.
This is the back, I didn't wanna go in the front.
But, um, I mean, if you look at the houses in Port Allen, I mean, a lot of the houses in Port Allen, I mean, it's bigger than a lot of the, the plaques in Port Allen.
You have slab on that house, the house facing Jeffson, where, where your current rented parts. Not him.
Oh, the other one, it's, it's a big lot.
Yeah, but you have, you have.
Ninety-five seven. Yeah. Um, the slab is right in front of the house where you park. So, um, I mean, some of the, I mean, I own some rental properties in Port Allen itself. And some of the lots are like twenty-five foot wide, so, um, these are a lot, these are bigger.
Yeah.
And I know something to say. Well, but I, I've been looking and I've rolled around, I tried to figure out what was going, I, I kind of know what was going on. My sister-in-law have a piece of property like this. And she was trying to get rid of it, and the relatives say she couldn't divide it. This whole.
Send it to.
Send it to this, send it to your property. And she had to sell it altogether. She couldn't divide. If we subdivide this, you, it can't be subdivided. That's what, that's what the relatives said. It can't be subdivided. It all have to be sold together. So if we subdivide this, you have other properties in Port Allen that we will be, we will be opening up a can of worms. And I know you, man, you talked about this, and you said you're not worried about everybody else, but what we have to do, we will have to be very careful with subdividing this property right here because if, from my understanding, we can't do it. So I know he liked your property, and I know it's a well-maintained property, but legally, we really can't do this.
Why is that?
Because you have to set the whole property together. You can't subdivide the property.
Well, and just to clarify, the proposed amendment that's before the council is not to particularly subdivide this particular property, but it's to allow property owners such as Ms. Landry to submit requests to the city for subdivision. So, uh, right now, she can't even, and property owners like her can't even submit a request to the city for subdivision. So just to be clear that whatever you decide tonight, that the proposed amendment is just a general, do we want to amend this, this ordinance to allow properties that look like this to be able to submit a, a request to say, hey, can I subdivide this? Because I wanna, I wanna, uh, divvy up the lot.
And just two years ago, we would deny it, and planning is on, uh, definitely, am I not correct?
I, I think that was, uh, last year, last year.
Coming from planning is on.
That's, that's right.
Yeah, this, this ordinance came before the council last, probably about this time last year.
We denied it because that was, uh, three or four people paying here on planning is on, and it's done. And if you do it now, we're just gonna open the can of worms, yeah.
It's nothing personal, Ms. Landry. I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering why is the lot size different than lot sizes in Port Allen?
No, ma'am. It's just they say that you, it has to be sold altogether. The whole thing has to be sold together.
I understand, I understand. This is, I guess for lack of better word to put it, is an exception.
That's why I'm asking.
And so when you do, and only God knows this, are we gonna have an avalanche of people asking to do it? Personally, I don't think so. Uh, no, I don't know.
So, who coming and asking to do it?
The way I look at it is, the lady is asking for a sub, a re-subdivide, and we have a man out here that wants to buy instead of rent.
Can he buy the whole house?
Well, he doesn't want the whole house. Maybe he can't afford the whole.
He can.
So, uh, that's, that's what it is, and I think that, you know, you can have ordinance to steal a cow's come home. It's exceptions to all rules, whether it's right or wrong. That's your, your determination. Uh, personally, I don't see anything wrong with it. He's talked to me, everybody knows that. And, uh, I'm, I'm good with it. I would much rather see somebody that's gonna put down roots here than have renters. And I don't have anything against renters, but, and Ms. Landry has a number of rental properties. I'm sure she's not gonna take offense to what I said, but.
Well, I, I can guarantee that if I can't subdivide it, I'm gonna stay renting it because I'm not gonna let it go for what I'm gonna be able to sell it for. Because nobody's gonna buy it like that. He likes it because he can park his truck underneath this four 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 Maryland. Because it protects his truck.
Oh, okay. I, I, I get, I get, I get what you're saying, Ms. Landry, and I do understand what you're saying. But if you subdivide this, and somebody say, well, I want the whole property, and they can't sell this property, they, don't nobody gonna sell the front part of it. Well, we just messed up and you devalued everybody else's property in the neighborhood. That, that's what we looking at. And we have to watch out for everybody else in the neighborhood because you have just, everybody else's property value has gone down because you have subdivided this, this property here. We have to look out for everybody else. We, we have to be, we have to be sensitive to everybody instead of just one person. And I, and I understand he wants to buy it, but we can't do it.
So what you're saying is if they have another property like this, you think somebody else is gonna wanna come and subdivide their property?
Yes, ma'am. If we do yours, somebody else are not gonna do this. We gonna have a snowball with it. And we, and then everybody's property value is gonna go down.
Item fourteen, consider adopting an ordinance to amend section two point five of article two of appendix B of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances and section three point one of article three of appendix B of the Port Allen Code of Ordinance relative to un, to authorize uses of property in downtown mixed-use district. Ms. Rose?
Ordinance number seven of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Port Allen, providing for the amendment of section two point five of article two of appendix B of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances and section three point one of ordinance three of appendix B of the Port Allen Code of Ordinance relative to authorized uses of property in downtown mixed-use district and to provide for related matters.
Can I get a motion?
I'm gonna motion.
Motion by Councilman Hubbell, second? Second by Councilwoman Joseph. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Roll call please.
Is this for, for us to vote first, the ordinance, what we just turned down?
No, 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 that was the public hearing.
Right, but.
This is the actual, if you're going to, uh, well, whoever, the motion could be, you have a motion for final adoption.
Right, so, no.
Just so we clear on what the motion is.
Yeah, so, uh, maybe I know what they, what they think.
Ms. Joseph?
No.
Ms. Gordon?
No.
Ms. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. King?
No.
Ms. Payne?
No.
Motion fails, ma'am.
Fifteen, public hearing to obtain views on adopting an ordinance to amend appendix C, sections twenty, twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-eight of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances relative to reconnection and deposit fees of water and gas utilities.
It's for the increase, I think?
Yeah, we talked about this before.
I'll make a motion. I mean, that's for all this, huh?
Public hearing, yeah, yeah. Um, we kind of talked about this before going up on the, um, deposits and the gas utilities. Anyone have anything to say?
Could you give us the amount, uh, for the deposit, um, that we had discussed, the increase?
Um, so the residential right now is two hundred, and it'll go to three hundred. And then the commercial, um, I think gas was two hundred, and it'll go to three hundred.
That's residential or commercial?
Commercial.
Both the same?
Commercial gas was two hundred already. Residential is seventy-five for water and one twenty-five for gas currently. And then commercial gas currently is two hundred, and the water is seventy-five.
Okay, so for them to, for reconnection fee for resident would be three hundred or one twenty-five?
Reconnection fees are currently ten dollars. We were asking it to be moved to fifty dollars.
Fifty. So what we, um, so what the two, the three hundred dollars for?
That's deposits. When they come in to get new, you know, new service, deposits are that as of now.
So for the two hundred for three hundred dollars for the deposit, is there for, the reason for the increase was again, I, I can't remember.
We leave, um, once they leave us, um, we're fighting now with utility customers that leave and don't cut off their services. Um, in the winter months, the gas is well over a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, um, that's why we're asking, because we get, yeah, we get stuck with high, um, utility bills, uh, once they move out.
Now, let me ask this question, you may not be telling this well. Let's say that someone moved out the house and he owed the city, but someone new come in, are they responsible for their, the old bill?
If it's a family house, we always try to recoup the money, yes.
Okay, but, you know, not from the new rent?
If the new renter is not affiliated, we ask them to bring a copy of the lease.
Okay.
Um, or whatever.
Because I know a lot of them say they moved in the house and they had to pay the old bill. They didn't know why they had to pay somebody else bill.
If it's a family home, yes, we try to, the only way we can try to recoup the money. If it's a family-owned home, then yes, we try to get the money. But if it's just someone moving in, then no, we ask them to bring a copy of the lease from the landlord and, and we try to serve them.
Well, I, I'll make a motion.
Okay, well, that's the public hearing, so, um.
I already moved on.
You're in hell.
Sixteen, consider adopting an ordinance to amend appendix C, sections twenty, twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-eight of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances relative to reconnection and deposit fees of water and gas utilities. Ms. Rose?
Okay, an ordinance of the city of Port Allen, providing for the amendment of appendix C, section twenty, twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-eight of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances relative to reconnection and deposit fees for water and gas utilities and to provide for related matters.
Motion?
Motion?
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Hubbell. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Seventeen, update on progress of resolving twenty twenty-three, twenty-four audit findings. Mr. Dagle?
You received my written update. Uh, we not run off, that went from red to green with approval of that pay process. I'm still working on the insurance act. Instead of trying to get them bonded, I'm looking at a policy that covers positions, not individuals. So if that someone leaves, the new person would be covered. It takes a little bit more paid work to get that covered. Looking like this would be about six hundred dollars. I'm trying to get that done. And you've got the other notes. If you got any questions on those, that written document that I gave you, feel free to ask right now. It doesn't need approving. It's just that the order requires that we continually give you written updates every month until we are clear, free, and clear.
Any questions? Eighteen, presentation of the monthly financial report. Mr. Dagle?
I gave you the line item budget comparison from actual to budget as the ordinance, I mean, as state law requires on it. Uh, highlighted something or written in blue, uh, pointing out some things that we had some, a pleasant surprise that after three months of property, I mean, uh, sales tax revenue coming in from the parish government being down, it was more than what we had allocated for that particular month, so that's a good sign. So tell your constituents, please continue to spend the money in West Baton Rouge Parish. You wanna take your family out to a dinner, use one of our restaurants in West Baton Rouge Parish, come across the river, and get, to keep that sales tax in the parish, and get some of that. Thanks the Lord, we spend inside the parish. It helps everyone else. Um, if you got any questions, um, things that I've highlighted, things that you may have seen, feel free to ask me.
Questions?
Nothing, right?
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can always come to my office and ask.
Yes, sir.
Nineteen, condemnation proceedings?
None at this time of year.
Hey, alcohol beverage permits, uh, they actually went out.
Uh, there are none pending right now, but their new renewals are, uh, because they are by calendar year, not by days. So come January first, everybody needs their renewals that sells alcohol. So they have to be approved by the council, so that's the December tenth meeting. So we sent out the renewal package to all of our constituents, and because, I mean, of all the ones that have alcohol licenses already, and because of the U.S. postal system being what it is, we had been hand-delivered as opposed to relying on the U.S. postal citizens. So we, yes, we did have city employees going into establishments that serve alcohol if they'll get that concern, you can deliver these renewal packets.
Agent, if they late paying a renewal fee, is there a fine for them?
Yes, there is. They, they don't pay by, for a renewal, there is a fine. I don't know exactly what that number is off the top of my head.
Okay. It's five percent, and they are not supposed to operate, uh, starting, starting January first, if they have not, uh, submitted their.
So if you are a frequent, uh, customer of any of these establishments, or you know that your constituents are, please let them know to get those renewal applications in. They cannot wait until the last minute because they have to be approved by the council. The council's meeting in December is December tenth. We only, you know, only meet once as a council, and it happens to be the second one of the month, not at the end of the month.
Okay. Yeah, dude.
Hey, announcements and correspondence. Um, Ms. Gordon's toy drive, annual toy, toy drive is December thirteenth from eleven to one P.M. Donations will be taken up until December tenth, um, so you can see her or one of her committee members, I'm sure, to donate a toy or monetary donation. Um, also, uh, we do have December meetings, but December eleventh is our senior dinner. It's from six thirty to eight thirty. We ask all council members if you're able to participate. Ms. Rose normally, uh, will remind you and send something out, but, uh, we need, they don't, and we're getting our scenes. December eleventh from six thirty to eight thirty at the community center, West Baton Rouge. Also, um, we have a West Baton Rouge Jingle Jeeping Parade. It's Saturday, December sixth, from noon to six thirty. I've been asked as a second year to be a judge for the Jeep parade, so I'm excited about that. The parade starts at five thirty. Um, if you have any questions, uh, you can get with Mr. Hubbell or the West Baton Rouge Tours Information Center. And again, it's Saturday, December sixth, from noon to six thirty. The festivities are back at the Tours Center, and the parade starts at five thirty P.M.
Mr. Hubbell, if, if you want to get in the parade, it's not too late.
We ask that you decorate because you love the judge. Any other, um, any other, um, now, we'll be lighting, oh, the Christmas tree. We'll be lighting the city Christmas tree December fourth, I guess. We'll be lighting the city Christmas tree December fourth, I guess, September nineteenth, four.
December the fourth?
Yes, ma'am.
What time?
We're gonna have some Christmas candles out.
We're gonna have Christmas, we're gonna have some.
Yeah, I see, you know, I see. What time, um, Ms. Rose?
Huh?
What time the Christmas lights?
Uh, right now, it's six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay.
If we can get a little bit early, I'll let it.
Can I angel?
No, because that's.
No, I'm just gonna remind you.
I think that's it. I'm motion, I'm sorry. I'm motion, I'm motion. Motion by Councilwoman Gordon.